The redesigned CityOfOrlando.net is a new way to experience your city government. Say goodbye to your desk. And get your info and your space on your time. And now, you can explore parks, public art, learn about events, transportation options, and community centers right from your mobile device. Your connection, your Orlando. TheNewCityOfOrlando.net, your official home of the city beautiful.
Glowing grass and leaves into the street can clog storm drains and can lead to harmful algae blooms in the lakes. Don't make the birds angry. Bag your leaves and grass cover and keep our lakes clean.
We know your workspace isn't always at a desk, so break free with TheNewCityOfOrlando.net. Our new site lets you experience your city government wherever your desk may be on your own time. So now you can access permitting services, participate in online forums, and check code enforcement statuses right from your mobile devices. Your connection, your Orlando. TheNewCityOfOrlando.net, your official home of the city beautiful.
I want to thank you for joining me this morning as we take another step in our Greenworks program. The city routinely replaces its garbage and recycling trucks over a period of time and we are going to start serving our residents by taking a giant leap forward in refuse truck technology. And you can see on the board behind us, and you probably saw them on the way in outside, we have some fantastic looking hydraulic hybrid trucks. And it is the first of nine, first ones in central Florida that will hit the road to collect residential garbage and recycling in a more sustainable way. And it comes just in time for the holiday season. This new environmentally friendly garbage and recycling truck will go into service the day after Christmas, which for the known fact is our heaviest garbage day of the entire year.
You're a person on the go, which means you can't be tied down to a computer. Stay on track with TheNewCityOfOrlando.net and get access to your government on your time, wherever your destination may be. Now you can explore entertainment options, stay connected with city council, and track downtown development right from your mobile device. Your connection, your Orlando. TheNewCityOfOrlando.net, your official home of the city beautiful.
The city of Orlando prides itself on being a community that looks out for one another.
For those residents who fall on hard times, it's critical that there's a community safety net in place to help. That safety net is Heart of Florida United Way.
In addition to funding preventive programs throughout the community in the areas of education, income, and health, Heart of Florida United Way also operates 211, a free 24-hour emergency helpline to connect residents in crisis with critical resources. Trained operators answer hundreds of calls each week, ranging from suicide de-escalation and emergency counseling to housing and utility assistance. The need is great. We hear it in the voices of 211 callers every day. Help us provide emergency aid and invest in the futures of the next generation.
I encourage you to get involved. Give, advocate, or volunteer. Do what you can to live united and make the city beautiful the best it can be.
Mayor Buddy Dyer's 2014 Neighborhood and Community Summit was held March 1st at the DoubleTree Hotel at the entrance to Universal Orlando. Attendees were able to take part in 21 different workshops, browse 61 different exhibits, and network with more than 350 other neighborhood and community leaders. Mayor Dyer presented awards to outstanding volunteers. The Neighborhood Champion Award was presented to Church Hill Thompson for the Rose Isle Neighborhood. The Community Builder Award was presented to Dr. Ruth McKeefery, Volunteer Director at St. Luke's United Methodist Church Orlando. Congratulations to this year's winners. We hope to see you at next year's summit.
On February 26th, Universal Orlando and Orlando's very own Mayor Buddy Dyer teamed up to show local students how they could cook healthy meals that also taste good, showing the students how to prep their food for better and healthier results. Mayor Dyer and chef Ed Collarin collaborated on cooking a turkey mac and cheese bowl with mixed veggies. After the cooking was done, each student was given a meal and a bag full of non-perishable items. To find out more information about Mayor Buddy Dyer's work alums, visit CityOfOrlando.net.
And whereas Orlando visitors and residents have long awaited the arrival of Sun Rail, and whereas on April 30th marks the official grand opening of Sun Rail, Central Florida's new commuter rail line, now therefore we, Mayor Buddy Dyer, Jim Gray District 1, Tony Ortiz District 2, Robert Stewart Mayor Prochem District 3, Patty Sheehan District 4, Daisy W. Lyman District 5, and Samuel B. Ings Mayor Prochem District 6, Orlando City Commissioners do hip hop proclaim Wednesday, April 30th, 2014 as grand opening day of Sun Rail in the city of Orlando!
What a great day in the life of our city tonight. We've only ever had one other major league franchise awarded to the city of Orlando. This is our second. This is a night to celebrate, a night to remember. Thank you very much. Go Lions!
I can tell you one thing, I didn't come to this project with these amazing team, with these amazing people. If you guys, just to participate, we came to win.
Okay folks, it's my pleasure to welcome Orlando City SC as Major League Soccer's 21st expansion team.
Through these tremendous efforts and hard work, this will truly be a venue befitting of City Beautiful, and it will continue to be the best bowl trip in America.
There isn't an event in the world that we can't host here in Orlando. And this venue in particular with its newest large stadium, it'll be the newest large stadium built in this state, we're going to reconstruct over 80% of this bowl. When we come back in 10 short months, we will have a completely new venue with amenities for every level of fan. And just as we designed the Amway Center, one of the guiding principles was that every ticket level, every spectator should have a great experience when they come to the Citrus Bowl. So we will open in 2014 in a brand new Orlando Citrus Bowl. A thank you for coming out tonight as we celebrate the lighting of this downtown icon forever known as the Tower of Light and nothing else.
Is that Orlando's volunteer program is so outstanding that we were selected by the President of Orlando to be the city of light, the only city in America to have that distinction. And that is, looking back, even though it's not well-known or well-publicized, it's one of the things that I hold dear because it reflects what the people of Orlando are capable and did in fact do.
Voila, the Tower of Light lit. Mayor Frederick told me tonight that it had never actually been lit from the very beginning in 1981, and commercial real estate women assisted us over the last six months in refurbishing it and then lighting it with LED lighting, and what a wonderful night.
I believe that I am the luckiest man on this earth. I've been so blessed and humbled to be the 37th police chief, but today is not about me. It's about the future of the Orlando Police Department and the new top cop, John Mina. Chief John Mina has all the right ingredients and characteristics of a great leader. John, I wish you the very best and look forward to watching you take OPD to the next level. And yes, Detective Dave Vernon, you were right, as you were quoted in the Sentinel. If my home was being burglarized, I would want John Mina to respond.
Congratulations Chief John Mina.
I am sincerely humbled and honored to be appointed as the 38th Chief of the Orlando Police Department, and I am extremely proud to serve citizens of Orlando. I do not like criminals, I do not like thieves, I do not like robbers, I don't like drug dealers, and I don't like people who abuse women and children. Nothing makes me happier when these bad people go to jail. So to the criminal element who preys upon this community, and to the truly evil ones who prey upon the children and the weak, and to the ones who try and harm our crime fighters, we will hunt you down and bring you to justice.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is now my honor and privilege to officially introduce to you the City of Orlando's 38th Chief of Police, Chief John Mina and his command staff.
The redesigned CityOfOrlando.net is a new way to experience your city government. Say goodbye to your desk. And get your info and your space on your time. And now... Say goodbye to your desk and get your info in your space on your time. And now you can explore parks, public art, learn about events, transportation options, and community centers right from your mobile device. Your connection, your Orlando. The new cityoforlando.net, your official home of the city beautiful.
I want to personally invite you and your family to attend Kids Fringe at the Orlando Fringe Festival. Kids Fringe is a special part of the Orlando Fringe Festival just for kids and families. Located in the beautiful Sculpture Gardens of the Manello Museum of American Art, kids and families can watch theatrical and musical performances under the big tent, take dance and drum classes under the mayor tree, meet robots and storybook friends at the character meet and greet, bounce themselves silly in a bounce house, and much, much more. All of these great offerings are free, thanks to the City of Orlando Mayor's matching grant, the Blue Man Group, and the Universal Orlando Foundation. Kids Fringe runs from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on both weekends of the festival. I'll see you there.
Sun Rail has 31 mouths, 12 stations in the first place, beginning a whole new era of transit for Central Florida. Now today, we begin, therefore, hereby proclaim, grand opening of Sun Rail Day Today, starting right here with us.
This east-west expansion, the Grapefruit Line, is the first of two new limo expansion projects to improve the ever-changing lifestyle for thousands of folks here in the heart of downtown Orlando. This is still fare-free, as we all like to say at Lynx. And for the first time, you will no longer have to pay attention to the schedules, wondering when your bus will come, because we will tell you exactly when the next vehicle will be here. And stay tuned for our app, which you will be able to look on your cell phone and PDA and know exactly when the vehicle is.
The city has worked in partnership with Lynx and FTA to triple the size of the limo service by adding these two additional routes and expanding the fare-free limo service to give options to our 15,000 residents in downtown, our 75,000 workers in downtown, and our over 400,000 visitors in downtown. This is a three-and-a-half mile route that will have 15 new limo stops and connect to Pearmore and Fulton Park and everything in between.
This is the next step in an ongoing commitment to provide Central Floridians as many mobility options as we possibly provide.
One of our goals is to become much more transit-friendly in downtown Orlando and throughout Orlando as a whole. Um, so this is a very good addition to our transportation options.
With the economic situation we have in the city, in the nation for that matter, they have seen themselves short of being able to provide for their families. So what we're doing is helping people, incentivizing and motivating people also by doing this. This is a community effort.
We know your workspace isn't always at a desk, so break free with the new cityoforlando.net. Our new site lets you experience your city government.
Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon. I'm Mayor Buddy Dyer, and I would like to welcome you to the May 12th, 2014 regularly scheduled meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation offered by Chaplain Lonnie Crawford of the Orlando Fire Department. Chaplain Crawford joined the Orlando Fire Department in 1976 and spent 27 years serving Orlando's citizens. Upon his retirement in 2003, Lonnie continued his service to the community as well as his fellow firefighters by volunteering as Fire Chaplain Number Two. As chaplain, he responds to emergency calls to give comfort to families in need and is always available to OFD when a spiritual support is needed. He is also the pastor of New Faith Pentecostal of Jesus. The invocation will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance offered today by District Five Commissioner Daisy Linum. Would everyone please join me in standing?
Good afternoon. Gracious God, as our mayor, commissioners, and city leaders come together to discuss the agenda for today, we pray that you continue to give them wisdom, guidance, and vision for our city, community, and neighborhood. Dear Lord, we pray Psalms 91, "Over the Lives of Our Men and Women Who Protect, Who Help Protect the City Beautiful." Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation, on the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain. I was reminded during the course of our invocation that we might want to silence our mobile devices or turn them to vibrate. Uh, Madam Clerk, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Would you call the role and make a determination before, please?
Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Here.
Commissioner Linum?
Here.
Commissioner Ings?
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first item of business is consideration of the minutes from the workshop agenda review and city council meetings.
Sharmus.
Second.
April 28th. Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Sheehan. On favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? And so the motion passes. All right, let's move right to awards and presentations. And Rebecca, you're the first one up.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, there are a number of organizations which support, uh, the Office of Business and Financial Services, both on a local and a national level. Some of those are the Florida Institute of Certified Public Accountants, the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, um, a number of, of organizations across our, uh, our department. But, uh, one of the ones which, uh, we're very active in, uh, is the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing, or NIGP. Uh, NIGP has been, uh, organization that supported our procurement professionals in government for many, many years. Uh, and we have a very active local, uh, chapter as well, uh, here in Florida and in central Florida. Uh, unfortunately, uh, in, in the past year, uh, a member of that particular organization, Cindy Bryan, um, who was a wonderful individual who attended almost every meeting that was held. She was always available, uh, to do whatever was needed, needed to be done. Uh, she was never an, an officer or, or took any leadership position really in the organization, but was one of those stalwarts who was always available. And unfortunately, uh, she passed away. To recognize her service, uh, to the Central Florida Chapter of NIGP, they decided to name, uh, the Member of the Year Award after her. Um, and this was the first year, obviously, that they did that, uh, in memory of Cindy. Uh, when they met to determine who the first, uh, recipient of that award was, they immediately thought of our very own Roger Cooper. Roger has been with the city for many years. Um, and, uh, he has served the city well. He handles a lot of our, our contract processing when it comes to, uh, our procurement processes. Uh, and when they met, they selected Roger for this very first. Uh, and it's because he exhibited some of the very same characteristics that Cindy Bryan had, had exhibited in the organization. Always available to help, always stepping up when needed, uh, and, and would jump in to do anything that he was asked to do. So today, I'm very excited to share with you that our very own Roger Cooper received the Member of the Year Award from the Central Florida Chapter of National Institute of Governmental Purchasing at the March Chapter Meeting. And I'd like to call Roger up for a picture with Mayor.
Okay, for our second presentation, uh, there will be the 2014 Orlando Historic Preservation Awards. And I'd like to call on Richard Forbes, who's our Historic Preservation Officer. Um, he'll give you a little presentation about what these awards are. And then, um, well, I'll preview that there are, the three awards are in District Four and District Five. So if Commissioner Sheehan and Commissioner Linum, when the appropriate award in your district is called out, would come down for pictures as well. Richard?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. May is National Historic Preservation Month, and the theme this year is New Age Preservation. Embark, Inspire, and Engage. Throughout our nation, communities are celebrating the significant places that have contributed to our American experience. Orlando is very fortunate to have a great number of treasured historic properties and resources that help tell the story of the history of our city and its people. Embark, inspire, and engage is exactly what our award winners have done, and we are here today to celebrate their accomplishments. The annual Historic Preservation Awards Program recognizes the place that our historic resources have within our city beautiful and the hard work that goes into rehabilitating and preserving these structures and places so that they may be enjoyed today and many, for many generations to come. Our first award is for commercial rehabilitation, and it goes to GDC Properties for the Aloft Hotel. This project took the vacant former Orlando Utilities Commission Administration Headquarters building, which was built in 1966 and was designed by architect Richard Boone Rogers. Rogers also designed the 1958 City Hall Building. This OUC structure is one of the few remaining buildings by Rogers left in Orlando. The structure sat empty after the new OUC building was completed in 2008. The building was listed subsequently on the National Register of Historic Places in June of 2012, and it became a designated Orlando landmark in December of 2012. The rehabilitation for use as a hotel took advantage of both the historic, a federal historic tax credit program and our local preservation tax exemption, exemption program. So for a few before photos, um, this is the lobby. Now, years of renovations of the OUC building had either covered over or hidden many of the original design features. Um, this was the conference room before, uh, one of the entrance areas before. Another interior shot. Now note the sea of carpet and dropped ceilings. And here we have the lobby and elevator area after. Note the restoration of the original terrazzo floors, which were under all that carpet. It was an amazing find. This is another shot of the entry area, and you can also see, in addition to the terrazzo flooring, they also restored the, um, the historic wood paneling that was in the building. A guest room, and a close-up of some of the beautiful figured marble that was restored in the elevator lobbies and on the second floor. Uh, this is another part of the lobby area called the remix zone, and then the XYZ bar. And here we have the renovated downstairs conference rooms. Uh, note the ceiling, which is the iconic concrete waffle structural system that has now been made visible. And so this well-done rehabilitation has given new life to this important mid-century historic property. Well done. Our next award category is for Best Residential Infill Project in a Historic District. The 2014 winner is 1415 Mount Vernon Street in the Colonial Town South Historic District. The historic building that sat on this site originally was a one-room wide cottage that had been poorly added on to unfortunately and altered over the years and had recently, more recently suffered irreparable water damage. The Historic Preservation Board approved the demolition in 2009 because of the deteriorated condition. The lot sat empty in the neighborhood for several years, and the developer Jerry Miller worked closely with Historic Preservation Staff and Board to come up with a house that was an appropriate infill, that wouldn't be too overpowering or big for the historic neighborhood, yet meet modern demands as well. The result is a two-story main house and detached garage that blends into the neighborhood of one- and two-story homes. While definitely recognizable as new, the house has features such as the open front porch, the window details, textures, and scale that are reminiscent of the other historic homes in the Colonial Town South Historic District. The builders, J&amp;J Construction, and the owners are Vic Smirno and Drew Cobb. John Franks is the designer. Our next award is a Centennial Building Award. The Centennial Award recognizes properties that have passed the 100-year mark and still retain their historic integrity. This year, our Centennial Award plaque is for 202 East Amelia Street in the Lake Yola Heights Historic District, which is the home of Cassandra Laffsir. The house was built by contractor BJ Lord in 1912 for R. N. Lockhart. Of course, these are all very familiar names for anyone that studied the history of Orlando. Um, the contractor, Lord, also built a very similar house next door at 206 East Amelia a few months ago, which we gave an award to the year before last. The materials for the houses came from the Lockhart lumber yards, and the house is an important example of the colonial revival style and is an important contributing structure in the historic district. The permit was issued May 6, 1912. That's 102 years ago last Tuesday. Prominent features include the Ionic columned wraparound front porch and stained glass window. Uh, many thanks to Cassandra for her stewardship of this beautiful piece of Orlando's history. Of course, being May, it's also time to announce the Orlando Historic Preservation Board Calendar Competition for 2015. We're very excited about this, um, this particular, uh, subject because it's our landmarks. And our city is full of historic treasures and landmarks, so this is going to be a wonderful opportunity for our photographers to go out all throughout the city and get great shots of our historic landmarks. And with that, I will ask the award winner- And with that, I will ask the award winners to come down, and the Mayor, and Commissioner Linham and Sheehan to come down.
All right, Brooke Bonnet is going to introduce National Small Business Week.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Small businesses, as each of you know, are the heart and soul of Orlando's economy. And so much of what our community has become has grown out of the hard work of our local entrepreneurs. National Small Business Week has been celebrated by Presidential Proclamation for more than 50 years. And this week, our community will celebrate our local partners who make Orlando one of the best cities in the nation to start a small business. According to the Small Business Association, more than, I think that might be Small Business Administration, more than half of all Americans either work or own a small business, and they create about two of every three jobs in the United States each year. Locally, at least 3,300 small businesses are located in either an Orlando Main Street District or in downtown Orlando. Today, we have an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the small businesses and the service providers that aid in their success. We are proud to recognize our partners, the National Entrepreneur Center and SCORE. The National Entrepreneur Center houses 11 independent business assistance organizations under one roof located at Orlando Fashion Square Mall. Since its inception in 2003, more than 100,000 businesses have been coached and trained through our local National Entrepreneur Center. We are happy to have NEC's Executive Director, Jerry Ross, here with us today. Also, SCORE is recognized here today. They are a nonprofit organization dedicated to entrepreneur education in the formation, growth, and success of small businesses. And many of SCORE's volunteers are retired entrepreneurs themselves. The Chapter Chair of SCORE, Maria Rodriguez Scott, is here also to represent the SCORE Organization. I'd like to ask the Mayor to present the proclamation on behalf of City Council as we recognize the National Entrepreneur Center and SCORE for their contributions to our community's strong small business sector.
City of Orlando Proclamation. We salute our community's small business owners for enhancing our neighborhoods and expanding opportunities for all through our vision, innovation, hard work, and sustaining Orlando's diverse economy. And whereas the National Entrepreneur Center is a public-private partnership with 13 local sponsors, including the City of Orlando, and whereas the National Entrepreneur Center, through its resource partners, collaboratively coached and trained more than 12,000 business people last year, and whereas SCORE is one of 12 independent not-for-profit resource partners located within the National Entrepreneur Center, and whereas SCORE is celebrating 50 years of helping local small business owners succeed through mentorship and education, and whereas SCORE is able to deliver services at little or no cost to entrepreneurs, and whereas we recognize that small businesses drive our local economy by creating new jobs and opportunities for our residents and enhancing the quality of life in Orlando. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of Orlando, hereby do proclaim the week of May 12 through the 16th, 2014, as National Small Business Week in the City of Orlando. Okay, and Marcia has the last one, which is the American Lung Association Women's Lung Health Week.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. It's a great day in the City of Orlando, as always, and today we are honored to recognize Women's Lung Health Week, as Mayor Dyer said. And the American Lung Association has really championed this cause for many years. I know that most people in the room have somehow been affected by much of the work that has been done by the American Lung Association as it relates to women's lung health. So this is an important proclamation, and here to share a little bit more about what they're doing and how they're engaging the community is Janelle Mittens, who is the Area Director of the American Lung Association. Janelle?
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having us here today. And I was, as we were on our way over, right before I came here, I got to tell the story again of what the American Lung Association has done. And I like to think about what we've done to see where we're going. The American Lung Association has been fighting lung disease since 1904, the oldest voluntary health organization in the United States. We started our fight against tuberculosis, which we've nearly eradicated in the United States. After a 50-year battle, we expanded our fight to over 20 different lung disease states, one of the more notable ones being our fight against tobacco use. Can you imagine a day being on an airplane and having a stewardess light a cigarette for you? Times have changed. But it takes time for us to implement these changes and to bring about positive change for lung health for all. Today, we continue to fight all these lung diseases, against COPD, against asthma, but we're really embarking on a new battle for lung disease and women. Women are disproportionately affected by lung disease, and really looking at lung cancer moving forward. Lung cancer is the number-one cancer killer for both men and women, and for women has actually been the number-one cancer killer since 1985. It's a long time. Today, that battle still continues for so many reasons, and the Lung Association is really pushing towards benefiting women with all lung disease. I'd love to look back someday, like we are today, say, you know, we don't smoke on airplanes anymore. We're not dying from tuberculosis. Can we look back here in 10, 20 years to say, women are no longer dying of lung cancer? Men and women are no longer dying of lung cancer. So we ask that you just engage with the American Lung Association, embark on a united front in this battle against lung disease. With me today, I do have David Brinkerhoff, our Board Chair, and also one of our interns, Kevin Barrett. It's his first day in his internship, so welcome aboard. But thank you.
City of Orlando Proclamation. Whereas every five minutes, a woman in the United States is told she has lung cancer, and whereas lung cancer is the number-one cancer killer of women in the United States or passing breast cancer in 1987, and whereas the lung cancer death rate in women has more than doubled in the past 35 years, and whereas women disproportionately experience illness or death from COPD as compared to men, and whereas asthma is more common in women than men, and whereas advocacy and increased awareness result in more and better treatment for women with lung cancer, COPD, asthma, and other lung diseases, and will ultimately save lives. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, hereby do proclaim May 11 through the 17th, 2014, as Women's Lung Health Week in the City of Orlando. Okay, we will move into the Mayor's Update. Commissioners, at our last budget workshop, there was a discussion about where the city has cut expenses over the last five years, which has been substantial. And in order to provide an in-depth overview, we have scheduled a special budget workshop to commence on June the 9th. Each Department Director will give an overview of the cuts in services or personnel that they have made during this time period. If you have any questions prior to the work session, contact either Rebecca or Byron. Recognizing the important role our community plays in keeping Orlando neighborhoods safe, and that resident engagement is a proven effective way to reduce crime, we are launching a Meet the Chief Series. We will be having Chief, our new Police Chief, John Mina, and our City Commissioners host a Meet the Chief event this summer in each of the Commission Districts throughout our city. The first event is in District One on May the 19th. You got that calendar, Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Okay. At Northlake Park Elementary from 5:30 to 7:00. Several items of note on the agenda today. We'll consider a Qualified Targeted Industry Tax Refund Resolution, supporting the expansion of Vayner Fry Inc., better known as Navis, in the City of Orlando. Navis provides innovative business solutions to hotels worldwide in order to be closer to their East Coast client base and provide an opportunity to expand their international client base. The company plans to develop its Eastern Regional Headquarters in Orlando. They'll create 67 new high-wage, high-value jobs for the City of Orlando. And I'd like to recognize Ryan Tomlinson, Senior Product Manager with Navis, who is here with us, and thank you for your investment in our community. Ryan, would you stand? Thank you. Commissioners, as you know, in 2007, we launched our Orlando Main Street Program to revitalize and benefit our neighborhood commercial corridors. And since then, the program has grown to eight districts and has impacted our community greatly, having created more than 3,000 jobs and $500 million worth of economic impact. And at the State of the City address, we introduced a plan to build upon the success of these physical Main Streets, announcing our first digital Main Street, or E Street, as we're calling it. The Orlando Tech Association will be our newest district to join the Main Street Program. And while this district doesn't really have geographical boundaries, it's a virtual community district that uses the principles of our Main Street Program to strengthen our booming tech industry. Orlando has been named one of America's most promising tech hubs, and it's estimated that one in every five jobs in downtown is tech-related. So the Orlando Tech Association will continue to work to make Orlando a great city for tech companies to locate to and to grow. So I know there's a few members of the Orlando Tech Association here with us today. Would you stand and be recognized? On today's agenda, we are approving a temporary use permit for murals for Orlando City Soccer. They are preparing this week for a very exciting announcement as they lead up to their first season in MLS in 2015. And I encourage you to follow the team's social media pages for more information about the announcement plan for later this week. I want to recognize that Phil Rollings and Teresa and Brent are here with us. Why don't you guys stand up and be recognized? And I should mention also that we had success during the legislative session, and the state legislature passed a bill a year too late, or a year longer than we would have liked, but it's right on time, right during the design, that will allow us to add $30 million in state sales tax rebate funding to the construction of the stadium. I was with the Governor this morning, and he is fairly disposed towards signing that measure, so I anticipate that will become law very soon. To foster the 21st century economy, Orlando has to have a great quality of life, second to none. And on today's agenda, Commissioner Ortiz, there's a grand award to help us with the renovation and reopening of the Park of the Americas. The improvement will add to Orlando's, or will add, the first off-leash dog park as part of a 28-acre park. And I want to recognize Commissioner Ortiz for his leadership on the project. Thank you, Commissioner, for your hard work and dedication in District Two. So we had a runoff election in District Five last week, and Regina Hill was elected and will serve as our new District Five City Commissioner. I would like to congratulate her. I don't see, is Regina here today? I don't see her in the audience. But I would like to congratulate her, along with Commissioner Gray in District One and Commissioner Stewart in District Three, who were also re-elected without opposition. Congratulations. And we will be hosting an oath of office ceremony for Districts One, Three, and Five on Monday, June the 2nd, at 10:00 a.m. here in council chambers. And I have a special presentation I would like to make at this point, and I am going to move back down to the podium. So today is Commissioner Linham's last officially scheduled City Council meeting. You get to participate in a budget workshop, I guess, for a budget that you're not going to actually vote on. Commissioner Angs would feel slighted if you weren't there beside him to keep him awake. But before we honor Commissioner Linham for her service to the city, it just happens that yesterday was her 45th birthday. So I would like to wish her a happy birthday. And we have a tradition that we like to sing "Happy Birthday" when birthdays occur. So if you would all join me in singing "Happy Birthday" to Commissioner Linham.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Commissioner Lyman. Happy birthday to you.
Spanish now.
How about it, Commissioner? Since this is your last official commission meeting, I'd also like to recognize you for your sixteen years of service to District Five and the citizens of Orlando. You are tied, I believe, with Commissioner Wyman for the longest-serving female city commissioners. I'm not sure they have female in my talking points here. I don't know if there's been a male city commissioner that served longer than that, but I know for a fact that you—
Nat Ford, eighteen years.
Commissioner?
Ford.
Oh, Nat Ford was more than sixteen? Okay.
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years, okay. So, second-longest-serving and tied-for-the-longest-serving female commissioner. So I am proud to honor you as a Commissioner Emeritus in the City of Orlando. And our city is certainly better off because of your service and your good service. I know of no commissioner that has fought harder for her people and her district. The accomplishments are numerous, leading from the blueprint to everything that has occurred in Paramore and the West Side. And I can tell you, Commissioner, that I have been proud to serve alongside you and work on many, many, many things that have been very beneficial for your commission district. And the other commissioners wanted to have an opportunity to make short remarks as well, so what I'm going to do is call on them by district number. So Commissioner Gray, you are up first.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. And Commissioner Lyman, when I heard that you decided to step down, it reminded me, as a young kid at seventeen, I said, you know, I'm going to enlist in the military. I can do twenty years of service. That's nothing. Twenty years goes like that, and I'll retire at thirty-seven. What a deal. I realize that was a tad delusional in that analysis, but for you to do this for sixteen years takes an enormous amount of patience, adaptability, and commitment. And so, while I've only been here for two years, I appreciate your support, but the mayor said it best. By any measure, you have contributed to the growth of this city. You should be proud of that. We're proud of you, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you.
You're always welcome back. Thank you.
He said it all.
But he can't say it in Spanish, Mr.
I'm going to say it in Spanish. Gracias por su sabiduría. Gracias por su mentoría también estos años. Yo sé que usted no entiende nada lo que estoy diciendo en este momento. Anybody Spanish who understood what I just said? I just said that I know that you all don't understand exactly what I'm saying now, but let me go back to English. Thank you for your wisdom. Thank you for your mentorship. Thank you for those great moments here at the dais, because we had had great moments. And it has been a real pleasure and an honor serving alongside with you, and of course, the other commissioners. But I will miss you greatly, and I hope that we'll definitely stay in touch.
Gracias.
Thank you. Gracias.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yeah, let me also express my thanks, and besides all the great things that has happened around District Five, Commissioner, thank you for representing our city outside of this community. You have brought a great deal of admiration to this city through your work in DC and through work with the cities, and your work in the minority groups throughout the country. I appreciate it, especially your commitment to continuing with the broadband in your community. That's a very important part. And the way you have advocated on that behalf and brought those ideas back down here, I'm deeply grateful for that. So, and everything else plus that, thank you, Commissioner. I've enjoyed serving alongside with you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Sheen?
Thank you, Mayor. And I got to be here for Commissioner Lyman's first city council meeting. It was a hearing on rainbow flags. And it was a pretty rancorous city council meeting, and she got to go from the frying pan to the fire, but actually was one of the voices of reason that day, and has continued to be the voice of reason throughout her tenure. And I have appreciated not only getting to see her in action when I wasn't a commissioner, but an activist, but also being able to serve with her these many years, and her service on Metro Plan and all the many things that Commissioner Lyman has done. But I have to say, Daisy, as a friend, you are, nobody could be a better friend, and you've been there for me so many times. People don't understand how difficult the yoke of leadership can be at times, and I would just like to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you for everything that you've done for me, to mentor me and help me through these many years.
You're absolutely welcome. Thank you.
Commissioner Ings?
Can I come down there? No, I'm on my way.
In a minute, you can come down there. Right now, just make your remarks up there.
No, you know, I just want to say, it's really been fun, because even before becoming a city commissioner, when she ran for state representative against Alzo Reddick, who won that race, but I was there as one of her campaign supporters and kind of taught her how to dress and how to look. Because, see, she came from Leesburg, and this was big-time city of Orlando. She knows the truth, too.
Wow.
Stood her up by her bookcase inside of her house, so we can take this nice campaign picture, and it made her look like she was an attorney. So, you know, it was great times. And then, before, while I was on the police department, before she come here, too, we served on the community revitalization committee together for the City of Orlando, and this was an ad hoc committee that we put together.
Paramore Village.
Paramore Village. We worked on Paramore Village. We worked on Mercy Drive. And so we were really trying to expand and do a lot of things. But, you know, it's truly a blessing that here I am, serving with her. And when I was at the police department, too, Danny Vereen, it was Officer Danny Vereen, major with the Orange County Sheriff's Department now, he was her police liaison officer. So he had a time trying to take care of her and keep her together. And I told him, man, don't let her fall from that bicycle, you know. Because she would ride the bicycle out there, so, I mean, she's been doing a lot of great things. And when she was running for her city commissioner thing, you know, her husband, who was the chief of police of Wildwood, Ed Lyman, they had this big motorhome, and they wrapped that thing before rap was being, you know, important, vogue, and all of that kind of stuff. And so, you know, being in the big city of Orlando, she was traveling, you know, mighty fine and looking real good there. So, you know, it's a pleasure, and then just serving here with her, and when I came in, she taught me, you know, how to read the books and all of that kind of stuff, so that's where I get it from there. Okay? And that's all I have to say, you know.
But Mayor, I have to respond to this.
No, she don't.
Sam Jeans told me to gain a whole lot of weight and cut my hair.
Gain weight, cut your hair.
That's what I did, too. I gained about thirty-five pounds.
That being, so she needed some weight.
All right. I think that we have a video.
Oh, good. Yeah.
All right, we have some more stuff. You don't get to go yet, Commissioner Lyman. City of Orlando proclamation. Whereas family, friends, and colleagues of Commissioner Daisy W. Lyman celebrate her retirement from the Orlando City Council, District Five, after sixteen years of leadership, and whereas Commissioner Lyman has championed initiatives in the areas of education, housing, healthcare, neighborhood infrastructure, downtown redevelopment, and transportation, including the blueprint that has created more than 2,600 jobs, and the Orlando Medical Careers Opportunities Program that provides educational opportunities to students and jobs for adults in the healthcare industry. And whereas Commissioner Lyman has provided leadership in revitalizing the Paramore Heritage Neighborhood and supported Orlando's economy through her efforts to retain the Florida Blue Florida Classic and to secure the Florida A&amp;M College of Law, and whereas Commissioner Lyman has supported faith-based and community service organizations, including her sororities, Delta Sigma Theta and Gamify Delta, and whereas Commissioner Lyman served as president of the Florida Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials and on the Board of Directors for the National League of Cities. She also served as the president of the National Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials and Women in Municipal Government. And whereas Commissioner Lyman's compassion was extended to the sick, the shut-ins, and the grieving with personal visits, fruit baskets, floral arrangements, get well and sympathy cards and letters, now therefore, let it be proclaimed that Commissioner Daisy W. Lyman is commended for giving generously of her energies and talents while consistently exemplifying good citizenship and dedicated service on the behalf of all people, and that she be appointed to the honorary position of City Commissioner Emeritus. Be it further proclaimed that this honor is presented to Commissioner Daisy W. Lyman as a token of the esteem in which she is held by the Orlando City Council and by the citizens of Orlando to serve as a lasting reminder of her outstanding citizenship and service. In witness thereof, signed by Mayor Buddy Dyer, Commissioner Jim Gray, District One, Commissioner Tony Ortiz, District Two, Commissioner Robert F. Stewart, District Three, Commissioner Patty Sheen, District Four, and Commissioner Samuel B. Ings, District Six. So Commissioner Ings, if you would escort Commissioner Lyman down to the floor, and if the other commissioners would join us as well, please, I'd like to make a couple presentations.
Mayor Dyer and council members, I am just overwhelmed. I had some prepared remarks, but I don't think I'm going to use them, because I'm going to give everything to Paul to have available for us on 28th in my last network, I mean, newsletter. But I do have to say this. I have had, I've served with two mayors. Both were excellent. I've served with Mayor Dyer the longest, and I don't know about a partner. Now, we've gotten in some tough stuff, but everything that has been good for the community, we have been great partners, and I appreciate that. Each commissioner, there've been times when I've had to go and say, hey, we want to do so-and-so, but we don't need to talk about it just yet. So all of you have been great partners, but District Five, which is a unique district, it's very complex. It is not something you can just march down the road and do. And so I appreciate all the support, starting with the very first day on council, when I came in with the vision for Nat Ford School, and all the way through, the law school that you mentioned, all the way through almost everything we've done, the houses and the families that we've provided homes to. Many of them don't even remember where those homes came from. All of our great partnerships, and of course, my beloved children, Danny Vereen, Zachary Spires, Roderick Johnson, and Kevin Williams, all of my police officers who've worked with me all these years, and of course, my beloved Marcia. She's been very, very good, very loyal, very good for me, and I appreciate that. If I were to name everyone, it would start with, I'll be here for days, from Richard Levy to Brian and Kevin and Gennaro that we adopted, the folks downtown, it's just too many. we adopted, the folks downtown, it's just too many to name, and my sorority sisters and all of the folks that make everything I do easy. I think of it, and they do it. Or, we always say, well, if you can think of it, let's make Kevin go write it or something. And all my partnerships with the staff, it has been a great, great opportunity for me. I love Orlando. When I travel, I tell everyone, I feel like I'm on vacation every day in Orlando. So I thank you for the opportunity, I even thank you for the opportunities that, you know, TV9 likes to talk about my flowers, and I saw that Mayor Dyer included in the comments. Oh, yeah, hell, yeah, I gave away a lot of flowers. Because I thought that was more important than giving somebody a hot dog, giving them a hamburger in my district that I loved, and the ministries that I've participated in. So to each of you in a real special way, Arthur Lee, from the day I got here, working together 16 years, some of us 18 years, I want to say a special thanks, all of you guys. I saw Patrick right there. All of these minority contractors, small businesses, this was a great time to say goodbye, because everything I've celebrated through the years, a lot of it happened here today. So I have very warm affection for you, no matter what you've said and done in the past, and if anybody tells you some things about me, guess what, they're telling the truth. I think there's going to be a roast, and I said, the only thing we can't do is have the Police Department, because those boys are going to mess with me terribly. But I'd rather them roast me now than roast me while I'm laying up in a casket. So I will have my great defenders like Aria Burns in Debra, great people I'm just so proud of. But let me tell you this before I close. I came behind a great man, Napford. Napford endorsed me to replace him over some other people. I have tried to honor his legacy. I have accomplished everything that he had ever mentioned that he wanted to achieve, and each thing I did, I acknowledged him. And through the years, through his family, Becky Ford, Natalie, Nadine, I have honored them, no matter where I go, they've always been welcome to be there, and we are still very, very close friends. I honor him. I pray that someone honors my legacy rather than try to destroy it, because I think your good works speak for themselves. So God bless you and thank you all.
Commissioner, it's probably a little anticlimactic at this point, but you're first up for Commissioner.
(laughing)
We're going to move on to the consent agenda.
Now we're going to get some real business taken care of again.
And the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a vote, single vote of council. We give each of the Commissioners an opportunity to comment on the consent agenda and update you on items in their district. And I will mention that there was an item at Agenda Review that was discussed, MPB Minutes, Item C3, and what I would like to do is approve the MPB Minutes as is, but defer Item 13, which is, to the council meeting of June the 2nd, 2014, to be considered concurrently with a proposed DRI development order for Fashion Square. So we'll take all of that business up at the June 2nd meeting. Okay, Commissioner Linum?
Again, Mayor, I just want to thank you for being a great partner, a great friend. I mean, just everything we do has been really successful, because you've given us all the resources to do it. And today, I want to just mention one of those great things we did, and I saw the pictures, and that Sun Rail, opening up Sun Rail on April 30th. Sun Rail wasn't going anywhere until Mayor Dyer became involved. It was a whole region, but we really needed someone to take the real leadership, and having come out of the Senate, he was able to tear up Metro Plan over there, get us all heated and fired up, and in Tallahassee every chance he got, until one of the best things happened in Central Florida was the opening of a commuter rail, and we called her Sun Rail, a beautiful lady, all dressed in white and yellow. So congratulations, that is your legacy, too. And I want to also compliment Mark and Josie Nijane. Mayor, I had the great opportunity, I think for the past four years, but this year Kevin escorted me out there for the Runway to Hope Spring Fashion Swari, and it's a group of raising funds for children with cancer. And as a two-time cancer survivor myself, it's always important to support any type of medical need that we have in the community, especially when we can beat it back in children. So I just want to acknowledge that. It was a great event. Chief Mina was there, he was all dressed up, and is that, was that a black tie, police suit? I don't know, but he was all dressed up and did a great job. My, I escorted a young girl from Winter Haven, she's at Nemours, 13-year-old, Rudeline Polynice, and I just want to congratulate everyone. 2,000 people showed up for that event Saturday night. And I want to go back to a relative of one of a longtime city employee, Herb Washington. Herb Washington's father, Bishop G. H. Washington, was funeralized on Sunday. I could not get to the funeral, but we at least sent a resolution. This man lived in the Palms in his outreach ministry. He moved his wife into the Palms when I was working with the Palms between 1989 and 2002 through the Pine Hills Children and Youth, Mercy Drive Pine Hills Children and Youth Task Force. He was just such an example of mission work. So I just have to say something. Herb was Recreation, was over the Recreation Department for a number of years, and I think he's with CH2M Hill now. So I just want to acknowledge that, such a good man, good family. I think he was about 85 years old. I don't count that, so whatever it was. Now to the agenda. I want to thank Walter Hawkins for getting those permits back on the agenda for renewal, for those not-for-profits and the other places we have for parking around the arena. We did a great thing, I believe, when we acknowledged the church, the Wellsville, and Els Club that have institutions there to be able to make some money when we have events at the arena without paying a lot in improvements. I want to also, that's, I think, Agenda C5. And on the H5, I'm always excited when I see a grant, but close code case grant. See, I watch those old code case files, if y'all know that. I watch everything police, FBI files, and I'm telling you, I'd like the DNA that we're going to get to clear up some of these cases and maybe even exonerate some people. But I think that's a great grant to go after. And I, for Derek Burke, we're getting ready to finish up, I think the west part of Church Street improvements, and let me tell you, I want to thank Charles Remdat, Kevin Edmonds, because a part of those improvements is the gateway to Paramore that we're doing there at Westmoreland. We've scaled it down because it was getting out of hand in terms of costs, but as I leave, I don't mind breaking the bank, Mayor, so.
(laughing)
Take all my money, and let's get this done. But that's a great thing that we're doing, and I just want to congratulate them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner will move to Commissioner Ings, District Six.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd also like to highlight Bishop G. H. Washington and his home-going celebration. It was a great event. The funeral was on a Sunday, and that was Mother's Day, and it was at the John Bridges Community Center there in Popka, and it was packed. So many people there. As a matter of fact, Bishop Washington, when he was at the Palms Apartments, I was on the Police Department, and we had the Neighborhood Patrol Unit, and we had two officers assigned to Palms Apartments along with Bishop Washington. And Bishop Washington really stood on the front line to fight the drug dealers in the Palms Apartments. And it got so bad that the drug dealers actually took some shots at his house and at his apartment. And so his family members told him, okay, Dad, you've done enough, it's time to move out. And so they moved him out of the Palms Apartments. But he has a church there that he started in 1974, and it's in Popka. And his son, Herb Washington, actually brought forth words of comfort, the eulogy. So Herb preached, Commissioner Linum, the service of his dad, and his subject was, he left his legacy. And another part of that was a quote that he had mentioned from his father, and that was, "You tell them, son," and all of the things that he had done, even in giving his last dollars to help people and to find it a way to be able to talk to those that didn't quite were Christians or had accepted, but to minister to so many people. So it was a great service, great, great opportunity, and especially for Mother's Day, that so many people throughout all of the community, Dr. Dorsey was there, and Charlie, Coach Miller, Charlie Miller was there, and he and his wife. So it was a great event, and June was there along with myself. On this past Saturday, the Voters' League of Orange County, Mr. Ezzy Thomas presented its meet and greet the candidates forum there at the Dr. James R. Smith Center, and these were candidates that were running for office. And one of the reasons I bring this up is former Florida Senator Nan Rich, who's running for governor, graced the presence of the District Six community and came out to the Dr. James R. Smith Center to meet with many of the voters out there. So I just want to say congratulations to you, Nan Rich, for reaching out into the heart of our community, and that was a brave and courageous thing to do. Also, coming up, Haitian Flag Day Celebration. It's going to be May 16th, Friday, from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM. We'll have a reception and networking in the Orlando City Hall Reteindre here at 400 South Orange Avenue. The program will begin at 6:00 PM. This is also sponsored by Universal of Orlando and Natural Essence of Culture. We're going to have food, music, poetry, door prizes, and a fashion show. And there's something special about the Haitian flag, so we'll have some history on the Haitian flag and what its emblems mean to all of us. The mayor mentioned the Summer Safety Series with Mayor Buddy Dyer and also Police Chief John Mina, and he will be coming, or they will be coming to the Smith Center, Smith Community Center on May 29th at 5:30 to 7:30 PM, and that's at 1723 Bruton Boulevard. And we're asking all of District Six to come out and meet the mayor as well as our new Police Chief, John Mina. The Orange County Alumni Chapter Delta Sigma Theta Sorority hosted its Ninth Eminent Scholarship Gala on April 12th, 2014 in Orlando, Florida, at the Hyatt Regency Orlando on International Drive. And Ed, would you start that video? And this was a great event, and this is something that I really wanted all of us to see, of how our black males and black females are being presented to society. Ms. Erica Dunlap, Miss America, 2004, was the keynote speaker. And since March of 2006, the Orange County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated has produced the Eminent Scholarship Gala to showcase youth from all over Central Florida. As a matter of fact, Byron Brooks's sister, Bridgette Williams, and her son was there, and they had the mother and son dance together as well. But this program focuses on awarding scholarships while introducing the honorees to society, exposing them to workshop training in areas of economic development, educational development, international awareness and involvement, as well as physical and mental health, and political awareness and involvement. Young high school juniors and seniors, male and female, have participated in this education-focused program, which encourages and supports academic achievement while providing life-changing experience in areas such as etiquette, professional development, financial management, college preparation, and tours, and physical and mental health awareness. High-achieving junior and senior students were recognized for outstanding scholastics, extracurricular involvement and participation in the community services endeavors. Thus far, the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority has successfully provided over $95,000 in support of continued education. And we congratulate Melinda Poole, who's the chapter president, and members of the Orange County Alumni Chapter for their commitment to make a difference in the youth of Central Florida. And Melinda Poole is also an employee with the City of Orlando, working for our venues as a financial analyst. So this was a great opportunity for us to really showcase what we're doing for our youth, and thank you so much. And Commissioner-
You all had to read on the Delta, and he reads ours.
And I was getting ready to say, Commissioner Linum is a Delta, so she's responsible too. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner will move to District One, Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. Like Commissioner Ings, I'll be brief.
(laughing)
Just a joke, just a joke. I need to give a quick thank you to the staff. I've been on a bit of a tirade about these bandit signs in District One, and with Frank Billings, Lee Byron Brooks, and Brooke Bonnet's support, Mike Rhodes and the Code Enforcement Group have been a big help in cleaning those up and are worthy of a thank you, so I appreciate their help. On the agenda, two items, Item C3, as I said this morning, or this afternoon in Agenda Review, I have to declare a conflict, excuse me, Item C3, one of the MPB items. It's the PD for 23-town homes, or excuse me, 28-town homes, and I have a business partner involved in that, so I need to declare a conflict on that item only, and I've turned in the paperwork, Mayor. And then finally, I'd like to also thank our friends at Navis for their willingness to contribute capital and their hard-earned dollars and time in our, in our city. Anybody that invests in our city, we need more of that, and we appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner will move to District Two.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I want to thank you for the recognition about Park of the Americas, but the, the real recognition should go to you guys, to you, Mayor and Commissioners, for supporting me on this project, and especially, there's a few people that have really worked tirelessly to have this done, and they deserve great recognition. And that would be Ms. Beth Gruber, Mr. John Perone, Mr. Peter Halter, and Ms. Lisa Early. These guys have really gone above and beyond what's expected to make sure that this project is as we expect from the community standpoint. And the community have been great. This is all a great partnership, so thank you, everyone, for your efforts. Commissioner Ings, you've mentioned Ms. Erica Dunlap, and back in 2004, I must have been really busy. I didn't know she had been Miss America. So it just happened that we had, on April 30th, we had the Holocaust, Holocaust of Central Florida dinner honoring Mr. Harry Rosen, which was great, and I had the time to share a table with Ms. Deborah Gerald. We had a great evening. And so it just happened that there's this wonderful lady sitting next to me, Ms. Fanny-
Fanny Williams.
Williams, sitting next to me, and I'm praising this great singer who was singing the American anthem. And so it just happened that Ms. Erica sat in the same table we were sitting, so now I'm all excited. Now I'm really happy that, you know, dear Lord, we got a great table. So I'm talking to the mother and whatnot, and then she tells me, she shows me this picture, she was Miss America 2004. I said, now I'm really, now I'm really honored that I'm here. So of course, I went over and asked permission to her boyfriend or whoever it is, the gentleman was with her, to get a picture taken with her. So she was wonderful, wonderful lady, really involved with the community, was a great event. That's my little story to everybody. Happy belated Mother's Day to all those, all the mothers here. I know that we didn't get a chance to congratulate all the mothers on our last council. I hope you all had a great day. I know I did with my mother, and my sister was a mother to my girlfriend, and so I hope you all had a great day, too. I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate the staff involved in the Sun Rail grand opening event on April 30th also. It was a great event, I enjoyed the ride very much. I'm reading great- I'm reading great things about the train. So congratulations to everyone. Mayor, us, and council members, and of course, our people at the State of Florida Legislature and Congress, Micah and Brown, and everybody who has gotten involved. This has been a great project. So congratulations to everybody. I joined the Council of Mexico, Mr. Efren Leba, on Sunday, May 4th, at Lake Yola for their annual Cinco de Mayo. That was quite a day. We had a great day. It was a great event. I want to thank them for their hospitality. I hope you all enjoyed the Cinco de Mayo as well as we did over there. It was a great celebration. And of course, we have made, of Cinco de Mayo is not only a Mexican tradition, it has become our tradition here in the United States. So that's great. Last Thursday, I attended the annual Central Florida Law Enforcement Memorial Service for the officers who have fallen on duty, especially. And at the Orange County Courthouse, it's always a sad event, but the beauty of it is seeing so many law enforcement officers in the community coming together to commemorate, you know, the lives of these officers. So it was a great event. I hope those of you that have never been in one of these get, every year, we celebrate this event here in central Florida at the Courthouse. When you get a chance, please, try to attend. It's a great event. A reminder to my constituents, and this next Thursday is our District Two Neighborhood Leaders Council meeting. The meeting will begin at 6:30 PM at the Englewood Community Center. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Move to District Three, Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Yes, I get a chance to be over there, Commissioner Ings and I also at the law enforcement. And it is something I just don't want to miss. It's just very special. And Chief Mina spoke this year. And it was great to, just to see the camaraderie among officers and remind us often that we need to make sure we keep them in our prayers as they keep our community safe. Let me mention a couple of things. The Sun Rail, I think, is, we are on a great start. I guess we topped 10,000 or 12,000 on the first couple of days. And I'm really thrilled to see that they have to add new trains. Mayor, you said it earlier, that there was a lot of discussion about when we're going to do it, how we're going to do it, and all those kind of questions. And now all the discussions have been, how many, when can you do it on weekends? Can you do it in the evening? How much more can you run? And that's the kind of discussion that we'd like to have. So I appreciate this council's leadership, and especially you, Mayor, for what you have accomplished. A couple of things, Happy Mother's Day as well. I'll share that with y'all. And I had a chance to spend some great time yesterday with all the mothers in my life. The other part is that Saturday night was dancing on the drive in College Park. We had probably, I would guess, about 6,000 people show up. It's a great fundraiser for the College Park Partnership, but it's also a great community event. I had a chance to speak there briefly and thrilled about that. Couple of quick updates, and I've got a few item agendas I'd like to talk about. The Family Fun Friday Flicks over at College Park Community Center are every third Friday. And so this Friday is May 16th is the movie, weather permitting. And I think we're showing the movie Frozen over at College Park Community Center. On May 27th is when the Lockhaven Neighborhood Center will host the Mayor Safety Series with Chief Mina. Please come over. It'll be 5:30 and get a chance to talk a little bit about, to meet with the chief and talk a little bit about the national night out and how we can prevent crime in our community. Along the same lines, Operation Lock It Up continues to move forward and begin to start taking it citywide. But we continue to see great strides. I appreciate Chief Mina and Chief Pigman, thank you for your work and leadership in that. We have seen a surprising number of people who are continuing to be careless in our community. That's okay. But we've also seen a great number of people who have continued to secure their personal belongings. And because of that, we've also seen crime go down, I believe. So we want people to lock up their belongings. It's the first thing we do in Neighborhood Watch, is ask you to secure your own possessions. And so we want to continue that. Along the same lines, we've done a couple, and we'll be doing a few more of the Business Watch orientations for our communities. We're going to try and attack crime on every possible angle we can. So those are the kind of things that I'm so grateful for our police department, for their leadership on. So thank you very much. The Fringe starts this week. The Kids Fringe will have its own festival this weekend. It'll be from 10 to 2 on Saturday and Sunday over at the Menlo Museum. Don't forget, everything is free. And I guess Wednesday, we kick it off, and then it goes for about two weeks. So it's really a neat opportunity. I think there's 264 different performances over seven or eight venues. If you get a chance to come out, there will be something for everybody out there besides great food. Some items I want to mention on the agenda. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to do something with the East Street. It really is creative. We've seen a great deal of success in our Main Street program. And to do something through a demographic as opposed to a geographic area is really kind of a neat idea. And I'm thrilled about that success. So congratulations to all of you. And we're looking forward to be a wonderful example around the country like the others that we have have been. Congratulations Orlando City Soccer, looking for a great unveiling. And we appreciate the work that y'all do here. Congratulations on the last little edge of our funding. And go Manchester City. Sorry, couldn't help it, just kind of came out. There'll be about six people that know that now. In about two years, everybody will know it, right Phil? The C6 is the QTI for Navis. Thank you. Let me just mention one thing, and it's separate of this, and I appreciate Brooke Bonnet sharing this with me. I had a chance this past week to review again the impact of what we do with QTI and the work that we do in our community. I will tell you, we get a wonderful return on our investment for the work that we do with QTI and our partnership with the county and with the state. And I would, as I've said often, I would love to toot our horn just a little bit more often about it. Because we don't give away quite as much money as we have scheduled to give away. Well, that's not, has nothing to do with us. But it is not because of lack of trying. And we've seen some wonderful return in investment, both in capital as well as operational investment in our community. And this is another great one, and I'm honored to support it. And then the last is the transportation impact fee reduction. I just want to mention that along with our Sun Rail. We are seeing major, major development. I think the last count was right about a billion dollars worth of development either in Slate or in plan. And this is another example of that. And moving this development at our Sun Rail stations, I'm just really thrilled to be able to support this and know what it means to us in terms of our community and where our community needs to be now and in the next 20 years. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. And we'll move to District Four, Commissioner Sheen.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to preface my comments by saying I am deeply distressed to find out that Commissioner Ings had so much input on Commissioner Linum's fashion, seeing as she has had so much on mine. So, Daisy, you never got me out of black, but you know, at least I'm wearing some patterns now. But that blew my mind when he said that. I'm just saying, I'm going to have to rethink some things. I'd like to welcome Logan Gray today. She's taking an internship with FPR. Welcome, Logan. And thank you, Lisa, for finding a spot for her so we could teach some young people about how city government works. On the agenda today, I've got item B10, Sly Boulevard Design Services, some wonderful work at the hospital. And QTI in Navis, which is actually in District Four, would love to see that happening. So thank you, Navis. And we're looking forward to you locating your corporate headquarters here. And on C11, Orlando City Soccer, I'd just like to say that I support the murals, and I think they shouldn't be short-term. I think we should be having community art throughout our entire city. I think if we've got people who want to pay for us to do public art, it's a wonderful thing. We've got graffiti all over our city, and I think this is a wonderful way to clean it up. And I think we should be encouraging public art, not discouraging it. And they should be up for a lot longer than a month, as far as I'm concerned. So I love seeing that. And I think there's a way we can do these public art murals and maybe restrict the advertising content to a certain percentage, but let them remain up. Because again, they've been wonderful in Mills 50, helping us with graffiti problem. And actually, one of the walls in my district, 903 South Orange, has been continuously tagged. So I welcome the murals. I want to see them stay. So again, I'm all for it. And I really look forward to you unveiling your new logo. It's very, very exciting. And again, I'm an advocate for all public art, and it's been nothing but wonderful in where we've installed it in my district. And I'm advocating for them to stay up longer. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Then is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Stewart. And that was with item 13 from, well, items 13 of item C3 being deferred, right Commissioner? Okay. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Does pose, motion carries. All right, let's move, well, I'll give everybody that had something on the consent agenda just a minute to make their way out of the room. Okay, let's see. We don't have CRA or NID, so let's move to hearings ordinance, the second reading, number one, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, designating certain land generally located north of East Marx Street, east of Lake Druid, south of Plaza Terrace Drive, and west of Woodcock Road, and comprised of 19.5 acres of land, more or less, as Plan Development District in part and Plan Development District with the Aircraft Noise Overlay District in part, on the city's official zoning maps, providing special land development regulations of the Plan Development District, providing for severability, correction, scriven errors, and an effective date.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Ings. I do have two appearance request cards. Paul James.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here today. My name is Paul James. I live at 2901 East Marx Street in Orlando. And Commissioner Linum, thank you for your years of service to District Five. I'm a resident of District Four, but everything you have done has had a significant impact on the entire city. Thank you. There are two things with this ordinance that I would like to address. I was here a couple of weeks ago for the first reading and addressed the compactor and dumpster area. And thank you for agreeing to put a roof on the building. The wording for the roof of the building, I have some questions about. They're specifically in lines 182 and 183 of the ordinance. The lines read that a roofing system that effectively screens the dumpster or compactor but still allows in air and light and decorative gates. My concern was, the concern when we first discussed this was about vermin, sound, and smell. A roofing system that allows air and light and is going to do nothing for smell, and is going to have very, very little impact at all on sound. I asked city staff where the wording came from. Jim Burnett referred me to Kyle Stanley, because that's who put the wording in. And he told me that it seemed like a prudent sanitation precaution, because he's heard concern over the years about completely enclosed dumpsters, both sanitation and SEPTAG concerns. When I asked for some more clarification, because I wanted to get an understanding of what it was, an email was sent to Solid Waste Management. That was all, that occurred on May 2nd, the day that we got a draft copy of the new ordinance. May 6th, since I hadn't heard anything, I again asked for clarification, further clarification of it. As of 12:30 today, we still haven't heard, I still haven't seen anything regarding this roof system from Solid Waste Management. And I know that because I've asked about it several times, I'm certain that Jim Burnett or Kyle would have sent it to me if they've gotten it. But I haven't seen anything. So I'm concerned about what the roof system is going to be. So, you know, my assumption is that solid waste has no input or doesn't want to have input on it. So I'm going to ask that on pages, on lines 182 and 183, that the words, "but still allow in air or light," be replaced with the words, "while trapping odors and deadening noise," which is the concern. So trapping the odors and deadening the noise. Replace those words. The second issue that I want to address is, regards the private gate into Lake Druid Park for the sole benefit of the residents of Alon at Audubon Place, or Audubon Park. And this is on lines 203 to 209 of the ordinance. CUP 2011-14 for Lake Druid Park, which was approved by Municipal Planning Board and the City Council, has a location, a spot in it for comments by the Orlando Police Department. And item number 11, under the Police section, specifically talks about, says, "Existing perimeter fencing should be maintained to prevent patrons from trespassing on the residence property and to manage park access to a single designated entrance." So first, the Orlando Police Department is recommending that the park have a single designated entrance. I'm a little confused as to why, what the future residents of this gated community are looking for is for a separate entrance into the park. The planned amenities for the park are a dog park, a community garden, and the bike park with the mountain trail, mountain bike trail, and the pump track. There's already a dog park in the plans for Alon at Audubon Park. So they have their own private dog park. There's plenty of green space for a community garden if they want to have one, which grants, which means that of the planned amenities, what we're talking about is access specifically into the mountain bike, mountain bike trail and the pump track. The residents of Audubon Park, Coy Town, Colonial Town, Baldwin Park, Winter Park, Claremont, Winter Garden, are all going to have to either come in by trail, in through the main entrance, or come in either by bike through the main entrance, or put their bikes on the backs of their cars and come into the main entrance. When the city first started discussing, was going to take possession of the land back in 2008, there was actually a meeting on Wednesday, August 6th, 2008, in the gymnasium at Primrose Center. Residents of Coy Town and Audubon Place City condominiums were present to that meeting. And Commissioner Sheen, I believe you were also in that meeting. At that meeting, Wes Ince, who was president of Audubon Place Condominium Association at the time, asked about them having a gate into the park. Wes can't be with us today because he has since relocated to Charlotte, North Carolina. But I did speak to him on the phone this morning. And the answer that he got for his question was, "Access to city parks must be open to the public. City policy will not allow a private gate with restricted access to a city park." So has city policy changed with that to allow private access to a city park? I know that when former Commissioner Bagley addressed this a couple of weeks ago, one of his comments was that other infill projects that were adjacent to parks had not restricted access to the park. After that meeting, I went back and I did as much research as I could do, looking at city parks. And I can't find a single gated and fenced city park that has a private entrance for a gated community into that city park. So maybe there is one that I can't find. But right now, all access into a city park is public. And every member of the public has access to that same, to all those access points to that park. So I'm asking that we maintain what we've been consistent in doing and have no additional entrance into that park. So on line 205 of the ordinance, after the words, "neighboring proposed city park," end parentheses, I'm asking that a period be inserted there. And that the words, "may have gate access connecting the property to the city park, providing that such access has automatic locking mechanisms that prevent gate access to the park during the hours that the park is closed to the public," be replaced with, "no gate shall be allowed between the two properties." If we're going to allow Alon at Audubon Park to have their private gated access, if folks at Audubon Place condos want their private access, or Weber Street residents, or Laura Place residents want direct access into the park, are we going to give that? We need to be consistent and look at it, and even fall back on what the police recommendations are with one point of access. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Bill Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Bill Bagley. I reside at 1300 Nottingham Street, Orlando. I'm here representing Orlando Heights LLC, the seller of the property. The request for the gate was a request made by the city staff. The property owner would... like to have a gate, but a gate is not necessary at that side of the park. As respects the roof, city staff made a recommendation, we're happy to remain with the recommendation that the city staff made. Thank you.
Kyle or Dean, you want to weigh in on either of those issues, or Commissioner Sheehan?
Yeah, I agree that the purpose of the roof was to, you know, to help with the noise and trapping the odor, so I don't understand why at all, because, why you're doing something, why you're doing open and closures, I am, I am concerned about that. You know, I mean, I know that some garbage facilities even have air conditioning to deal with the odors, so I do have a concern about how that part is warded. The park access, I mean, the thing is, we asked, the residents didn't want people in the park at night, and the only way to do that is to restrict the hours that the gates open, and the only reason there's a gate is because the residents wanted this to be a gated community, because they didn't want anything going all the way through. So it's one of those situations where be careful what you ask for, you may get it, which is they didn't want anything to go through, so now we have a gate, and so we have to deal with gates, so that, you know. I worked with the neighborhood, and they said that they did not want a thorough street in that area, they wanted to be gated, so we're having to deal with some special circumstances. So I think what we have in there for the gate is okay, but I am concerned about this odor and noise thing, and y'all, I'm sorry, I usually have these things worked out beforehand, but I didn't get, you know, I couldn't come to the meetings, you know, towards the end there when Commissioner Bagley had them, and I had other neighborhood meetings, and I had conflicts, I just couldn't make it, so sorry about that. I usually have these things worked out way before bringing something to council, so this is not usually the way I do business, but you know, bear with me on this one.
Dean.
Mayor and Commissioners, we've consulted with our Solid Waste staff with regard to the language in the PD as drafted. Their conclusion is that a fully enclosed, fully airtight dumpster or compactionary would not be feasible, nor would it, would it actually work, it might actually make it worse, only because you need to have some natural air and circulation there to allow the area to not have odors. They propose an ozone injected system, and the ozone actually dissipates or reduces the odor issue, so by making it airtight actually does not help the problem, it actually makes worse.
Can we stipulate this ozone thing then, Dean?
Pardon me?
Can we stipulate this ozone thing?
That is, well, and here's the issue, each, until this actually is designed, at this point, we're at a very preliminary stage, until it's designed, it may or may not need ozone. It may, it may require other systems, but our Solid Waste folks, when they work with the applicant on permitting of these systems, they look at them on a case-by-case basis, and depending on the actual design or the contractor that's used to design that facility, at that point, they make a determination as to what is the best mechanism to make sure that there is noise attenuation, in terms of buffering, and odor control, and also as it relates to vermin control or anything else. So they're really individually designed, this is a, this is a PD, this is a very high-level master plan at this point, so to require that may then cause a problem in the future, if indeed they come up with a different alternate system in terms of how they do the compaction and the enclosure of the dumpster. We think the language as proposed here is satisfactory, and those details will be addressed at the time of design, and should not be addressed right now.
I'm fine with that, as long as the language is clear enough that there are concerns about the noise and the odors, because I think that's an appropriate infill concern.
Absolutely, Commissioner, and the language, as it says, it says must be maintained free of offensive odor and vermin. We think that's enough clear language to give design direction to both the contractor who'll be designing that system and the actual permitting of that system when it comes in for.
Not only that, Dean, but the concern's been expressed from the DIAS, so on top of the language in the PD.
Right, absolutely. And if I could, just on the park access, normally we want our parks to be fully accessible and open to the public. In this particular case, this project is the only new project that's been proposed next to the park. We would prefer that there be access to the park, it's a lot easier to get to the park through a gate as opposed to going all the way around to the other side to get into the park. This is a subject that I would refer to the City Council on, but we think that there is appropriateness that there be access to the park from this community as long as it is indeed shut down at night during, after sunset, and we believe the condition as written addresses that concern. If any other surrounding neighborhood or surrounding project wanted to have access to the park, we would allow, or consider those access points as well, probably with the same kind of condition that there would not be access after hours.
Right. Thank you, Dean, and it's been interesting that some of the folks now that live along in the Coy Town area actually have said they want to have access to their street to the park now, so, you know, again, we'll deal with that when the time comes. Unless anybody else has any other comments or questions, I'd just like to go ahead and move approval, and I think we've had enough, you know, we've had some concerns from the neighborhood. I think we've had, we've made enough recommendations to the PD that we've addressed the concerns of the residents, I move approval.
Okay, any further comment among Commissioners? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, annexing to the corporate limits of the City of Orlando, Florida, certain real property generally located at the northeast corner of the intersection of State Road 417 and Moss Park Road, comprised of 16.13 acres more or less, providing for severability, correction of scribblers errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt, second. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Yes, ma'am.
Heather Heims with the Law Firm of Ackerman, LLP, 420 South Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida. I am just here on behalf of the applicant in support of the ordinances and request your approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Would you make sure to fill out an appearance card?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, designating certain land generally located at the northeast corner of the intersection of State Road 417 and Moss Park Road, comprised of 16.13 acres more or less, as R3B on the city's official zoning map, providing for severability, correction of scribblers errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt, second. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this matter? I'm guessing you're in favor of that one as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Number four, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the growth management plan to designate certain property generally located north of the Beachline Expressway, State Road 528, east of Narcusi Road, and south of Lee Vista Boulevard, comprised of about 14.7 acres, as airport support district medium intensity in part, and conservation in part, on the city's official future land use map. Designating certain property generally located at the northeast corner of State Road 417 and Moss Park Road, comprised of about 16.13 acres, as residential medium intensity on the city's official future land use map. Establishing new subarea policy S40.3, providing for severability, correction of scribblers errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt, second. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Number five, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to sidewalk cafes, amending Section 54.28 Orlando City Code to adjust and clarify sidewalk clear zone and sidewalk furniture zone dimensional standards, and to provide exemptions from the general requirement of providing approved barriers separating the sidewalk clear zone from the approved sidewalk cafe area for certain eating and drinking establishments. Providing for severability, codification, correction of scribblers errors, and an effective date.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, and the motion carries. Ordinance is first read, number one.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the land development regulations associated with certain portions of the existing Orlando Lutheran Towers planned development zoning district, relating to certain land generally located north of East Church Street, south of East Pine Street, east of Lake Avenue, and west of South Osceola Avenue in the South Osceola neighborhood, comprised of approximately .7 acres of land, providing an amended development plan, providing for severability, correction of scribblers errors, and an effective date.
Senator, second. Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ings. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter?
That's usually how things go in District Four.
Better, Commissioner.
Awesome.
Let's see, discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, and so the motion carries, and that concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council for the day. Okay, we do have several general appearance requests. The first is Jonathan Sebastian Blount, Blount as in count.
But that will be a subject for another time. First and foremost, I just want to say something about Commissioner Linum. When the city towed away three of my cars from in front of my home, which was around the corner from her in Rock Lake, and erected no parking signs the next day, Commissioner Linum advocated for me. When code enforcement voted up my house because my utilities had been turned off, and I was out of a home for two and a half weeks because of it, Commissioner Linum voiced for me. When I was repeatedly targeted by renegade OPD officers and continuously engaged and arrested, Commissioner Linum spoke up for me, and she said, someone has to protect Mr. Blount's rights. When the drug dealers attacked me and targeted me for advocating the building of a memorial park on the spot where a 19-year-old Tiara Dyer was shot and killed randomly, and the public-private partnership with the OPD and the firemen, we built a park, and they put together the playground equipment, and I was targeted by the drug dealers, she advocated for emergency housing for me. So I just want to tell you that you have been incredibly important to me personally in my life, and Commissioner Ings joined in many of those situations, and I say almost tearfully how much I appreciate you.
Thank you.
I have got to bring this again to the attention of the Commission. Julie Williams stated in her article, when the mayor advocated that people walk downtown to the soccer matches the 10 blocks, she said, I have a question for the mayor, when was the last time he walked through downtown Orlando without his bodyguard? The area downtown Orlando, and she designated the area.